Good evening, Central Unified Community. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Today is August 22nd, 2023 at 6:04 PM. We're going to call the meeting to order. Our first point of business is our attendance. Let the record show that Mr. Cervantes is not in person. I have received a request from Trustee Cervantes to appear virtually for a qualifying reason under AB 2449. Do I have a motion to allow his attendance?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Corio and a second by Trustee Carfond. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries six zero. And I must ask you, Trustee Cervantes, can you confirm that no one is over the age of 18 that is currently with you? And if they are, can you identify them by name?
No one is with me.
Thank you.
President Singh, we need to do a roll call vote.
My apologies. So in terms of the... Sorry. So moving forward, we will. Well, I guess we don't have to at this point. Right. Thank you. Do you have any comments from the public on any closed session items?
I receive none at this time.
Setting 30 seconds on the clock.
No, thank you. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Corio, a second by Trustee Carfond. Those in favor, please say aye.
Now.
Aye.
Okay. Now we have a roll call vote. Mrs. Lopez, can you lead us in the roll call vote?
Trustee Corio?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Carfond?
Aye.
Trustee Mayeline?
Yes.
Trustee Sellers?
Yes.
Trustee Solis?
Yes.
President Singh?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds have passed, and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Then we will go ahead and convene in closed session, and we will back an open session at 7:00 PM.
Yes.
...
If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may speak during the public comment section of the agenda. Si desea dirigirse a la mesa directiva, llame al número 559-276-3150 o complete un formulario de solicitud provisto en la mesa cerca de la entrada y preséntelo al secretario de la Mesa Directiva antes de la reunión. Se permitirán comentarios públicos relacionados con los temas de la agenda cuando se llame el tema. Los comentarios públicos sobre un tema que no está en la agenda se permitirán durante la sección de comentarios públicos de la agenda. The district welcomes other language speakers to the board meetings. Anyone planning to attend and needing an interpreter for a language other than Spanish should call 559-274-4700, extension 10150. By noon on the Friday preceding the board meeting or at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting, so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. El distrito da la bienvenida a las personas que hablan otros idiomas a las reuniones de la mesa directiva. Cualquier persona que planifique asistir y necesite un intérprete para un idioma que no sea español, llame al 559-274-4700, extension 10150. El viernes antes de la reunión y antes del mediodía, o por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación. Thank you.
Gracias. We next move on to our presentations. We ask Assistant Superintendent Collegian to share about our employee recognitions.
Thank you, President Chen. This evening, we have the distinct pleasure of introducing to the Board of Trustees some newly appointed administrators here in Central Unified to serve our students. As I call your name, please stand and work your way up to the podium, and then we'll formally recognize you on the stage with our board members. Our new supervisor of campus culture and safety, Ms. Cassie Smith. The new principal of McKinley Elementary School, Dr. Mari-Lou Canon. New interposition as the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Ms. Erin English. And last but not least, the new principal of Rio Vista Middle School, Ms. Kinsey Fink. We congratulate each of them on their new assignments and wish them a successful school year.
Thank you again to our new additions. Very excited for the upcoming school year. We next turn to our employee association highlights. Do we have a member from CSEA? We have President Nagiri.
This one? Okay. Good evening, Board members and cabinet members. We are very excited for another school year here in Central Unified. We look forward to continue building relationships with the district as well as our commitment to promote a positive learning environment for our students and families. I thank you for your time and have a good evening. Thank you.
Do we have a member from CUTA? Thank you. Then we move on to our school highlights, before we can ask Dr. Nate Mullen from Teague Elementary School to join us.
Thank you, Board members and cabinets, for the opportunity to just highlight what's happening at our great school, Teague Elementary School. All right, thank you. Great things are happening at Teague. We are improving our systems and having a good time building relationships. So I just want to highlight some of the great things that are happening, celebrations. First off, briefly, some of the wins we saw were in 2022 where we had 11% of students on or above grade level. We were able to bring that to 28% in ELA, 6.5 to 27.4 in math. So we count those as wins. We also, our second grade class, I just want to call out specifically, they moved their students from 1% on or above grade level to 52% on or above grade level. So there's quite a bit of movement, and we are working to continue to just bring our students up. We know they can do it, and we are figuring out ways to support them. Our suspension rate went down from last year by 2.4%, which we are happy with, and truly appreciate the addition of Thinkery staff and the supports we've been receiving as well. Our English learners at 15% there, you can see, 20 of our students were reclassified at the end of the year, which we count as a win. Nine of those students were reclassified this year, okay? And 64% of our EL students made growth according to the LPAC. The biggest gain we've seen in connection with our community and our families has been on our Panorama survey. Were our parent engagement increased 15%. School family connection by 19%. And then school safety by 13%. And this is on our family survey. We're still working so that our students can realize this as well because they are, of course, our end users. Some things that we're really proud to have as a part of our campus, our Maricorp, we received two tutors, full-time tutors, so thank you for that. We've also pulled on a community partner, which is the Troy Center. Troy stands for Truly Reviving Our Youth. In fact, those staff members began today, and they will be on our campus every Tuesday and Wednesday, serving our students with organized games during our lunch recess time. Also, last year, which was a great accomplishment for Teague, we received our second grade intervention class won first place for top selection of the K5 class book category in their story, What About Reading? So that was really great. They came out and did a video, and the students were acknowledged. So that was wonderful. We also have, in our plan, we have additional PBIS staff that's really been supporting our need to support our students, which is one of the reasons I feel like our suspension levels are down because we are really trying to brainstorm how we can help our students. Parent connections are going great with our principals' coffee. We have parents who are very active in our ELAC and our SSC, as well as just the donuts with dad, muffins with mom, all those wonderful things that our campus is able to do for our families. Also, we've implemented live school again this year, and our students are growing in their ability to show character, and we want to reward that. We find there's overwhelming majority of our kids are on track, and we want to acknowledge those students and give them the attention for great behavior, great work. Also, last, I'd like to highlight our Scholars Club. Our Scholars Club is great. A teacher came to us last year wanting to do that for our fifth and sixth graders, and last year they went to a science museum in San Jose, and just really calling out the great work our students are doing with writing and scholarship. A challenge that we do, are working with to overcome, is our attendance, our chronic absenteeism. So some things we've done is we've established a stellar attendance program. We also have Thinkery groups going. Our Thinkery is running really well this year. We have dedicated staff for that, of course. Our parent education, we are going to continue to just notify our parents of the importance of attendance and how just a small amount of absence can cause a large amount of damage for student learning. SEL instruction is going well. Our teachers are plugging in to Second Step. Of course, we're doing awards and assemblies, and more parents are volunteering to be in our classrooms and encourage our students. Last but definitely not least, some of these things I've mentioned, but this year we're going to pull on the community organization called PK to support our
La bienvenida a las personas que hablan otros idiomas a las reuniones de la mesa directiva. Cualquier persona que planifique asistir y necesite un intérprete para un idioma que no sea español, llame al 559-274-4700, extensión 10150. El viernes antes de la reunión y antes del mediodía, o por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación. Thank you.
Gracias. We next move on to our presentations. We ask Assistant Superintendent Collegian to share about our employee recognitions.
Thank you, President Chen. This evening, we have the distinct pleasure of introducing to the Board of Trustees some newly appointed administrators here in Central Unified to serve our students. As I call your name, please stand and work your way up to the podium, and then we'll formally recognize you on the stage with our board members. Our new supervisor of campus culture and safety, Ms. Cassie Smith. The new principal of McKinley Elementary School, Dr. Mari-Lou Canone. New interposition as the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Ms. Erin English. And last but not least, the new principal of Rio Vista Middle School, Ms. Kinsey Fink. We congratulate each of them on their new assignments and wish them a successful school year.
Thank you again to our new additions. Very excited for the upcoming school year. We next turn to our Employee Association highlights. Do we have a member from CSEA? We have President Nagiri.
This one? Okay. Good evening, Board members and Cabinet members. We are very excited for another school year here in Central Unified. We look forward to continue building relationships with the district as well as our commitment to promote a positive learning environment for our students and families. I thank you for your time and have a good evening. Thank you.
Do we have a member from CUTA? Thank you. Then we move on to our school highlights. If we can ask Dr. Nate Mullen from Teague Elementary School to join us.
Thank you, Board members and Cabinet, for the opportunity to just highlight what's happening at our great school, Teague Elementary School. All right, thank you. Great things are happening at Teague. We are improving our systems and having a good time building relationships. So I just want to highlight some of the great things that are happening, celebrations. First off, briefly, some of the wins we saw were in 2022, where we had 11% of students on or above grade level. We were able to bring that to 28% in ELA. 6.5 to 27.4 in math. So we count those as wins. We also, our second grade class, I just want to call out specifically, they moved their students from 1% on or above grade level to 52% on or above grade level. So there's quite a bit of movement, and we are working to continue to just bring our students up. We know they can do it, and we are figuring out ways to support them. Our suspension rate went down from last year by 2.4%, which we are happy with, and truly appreciate the addition of Thinkery staff and the supports we've been receiving as well. Our English learners, at 15% there, you can see. 20 of our students were reclassified at the end of the year, which we count as a win. Nine of those students were reclassified this year, okay? And 64% of our EL students made growth according to the ALPAC. The biggest gain we've seen in connection with our community and our families has been on our Panorama survey. Where our parent engagement increased 15%. School-family connection by 19%. And then school safety by 13%. And this is on our family survey. We're still working so that our students can realize this as well, because they are, of course, our end users. Some things that we're really proud to have as a part of our campus are AmeriCorp. We received two tutors, full-time tutors, so thank you for that. We've also pulled on a community partner, which is the Troy Center. Troy stands for Truly Reviving Our Youth. In fact, those staff members began today, and they will be on our campus every Tuesday and Wednesday, serving our students with organized games during our lunch recess time. Also, last year, which was a great accomplishment for Teague, we received our second grade intervention class won first place for top selection of the K-5 class book category in their story, What About Reading? So that was really great. They came out and did a video, and the students were acknowledged. So that was wonderful. We also have, in our plan, we have additional PBIS staff that's really been supporting our need to support our students, which is one of the reasons I feel like our suspension levels are down, because we are really trying to brainstorm how we can help our students. Parent connections are going great with our principals' coffee. We have parents who are very active in our ELAC and our SSC, as well as just the donuts with dad, muffins with mom, all those wonderful things that our campus is able to do for our families. Also, we've implemented live school again this year, and our students are growing in their ability to show character, and we want to reward that. We find there's overwhelming majority of our kids are on track, and we want to acknowledge those students and give them the attention for great behavior, great work. Also, last, I'd like to highlight our Scholars Club. Our Scholars Club is great. A teacher came to us last year wanting to do that for our fifth and sixth graders, and last year they went to a science museum in San Jose, and just really calling out the great work our students are doing with writing and scholarship. A challenge that we do, are working with to overcome, is our attendance, our chronic absenteeism. So some things we've done is we've established a stellar attendance program. We also have Thinkery groups going. Our Thinkery is running really well this year. We have dedicated staff for that, of course. Our parent education, we are going to continue to just notify our parents of the importance of attendance, and how just a small amount of absence can cause a large amount of damage for student learning. SEL instruction is going well. Our teachers are plugging in to Second Step. Of course, we're doing awards and assemblies, and more parents are volunteering to be in our classrooms and encourage our students. Last but definitely not least, some of these things I've mentioned, but this year we're going to pull on the community organization called PK to support our families with resources to help their students. Also, we are going to pull in Success Together, and we're making use of all the wonderful things that are available at the Teague Community Center. We're finding that is you can be surrounded by a lot of great resources, but we just want to continue to let our families know that we're there for them and there's services available to support them on various levels. And that would be all.
Thank you, Dr. Mullen. We may have a few questions or comments from the board.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Creo.
Thank you. I'm impressed with the growth that you talked about, and I'm curious whether there's, you've been able to identify if there's any contributing factors, anything that has been done differently to help with that growth that you were talking about, both in the ELA and math, and then specifically with the Grade 2?
Yes. I think that, just in looking at data and putting out some expectations, about mid-year, we made some decisions about how we were going to focus on our student learning, and we wanted to focus on foundational skills, dialing into our small group instruction, also really making good use of the IABs, really the things that are part of the blueprint. So we've just really been making a concerted effort to step up in those areas, and we're really looking forward to gaining some ground. We're not going to, as our district is doing, we're not changing our plans and trying a bunch of different things. We're going to stay the course, and hopefully we can see more growth than we're seeing.
Yeah, I hope so too. I'm excited for that. You also mentioned the use of Thinkeries, both in reference to the decrease in suspensions, which is awesome, and then in dealing with absenteeism. Can you talk a little bit more as to what the Thinkery is, how that's being used?
Yes, actually, that's been, we've been quite an evolution there. So we started out with just a space for students. Last year, we moved it to having that Thinkery space where, the Thinkery space is really a self-choice reflection space where students can self-regulate. So we're really trying to help students identify their feelings and then have a place to go if they need to be out of the classroom. Some of our grade levels have Thinkery spaces amongst them, so we can keep our kids close, as close to instruction as possible, right? But for those students who do need just a clean break, we have that space available, and they're there for a short time, and then they get right back to class. But that's what the Thinkery is for, for reflection. Sometimes it's even for restoration if students need to meet or they need to work through some things.
Thank you. And one last question. I know you mentioned that this year you guys would be using PK. Can you just talk a little bit about how that will be used and how the information will be disseminated to our parents?
Yes, so PK has a couple different modules. They're eight-week modules, and so there's a module that focuses specifically on K-3 education. And then there's a module that's just general education, I would say instructional tools and supports for parents, K-6. And we're going to focus on the K-6 module this year. So parents will go through, there'll be computer literacy integrated with that, some ELD and math skill integration, so they can support their students. And that will be in the springtime. In the fall, we're looking at having a couple Success Together courses, and perhaps another one in the spring. But what we find really helpful with these organizations is that they cover, help cover the childcare, they assist with getting word out about the events, and our parents can get a sense of accomplishment in helping their students.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Mailing?
Yeah, thank you for coming. Excellent presentation. I have one question, and maybe you can give me an explanation on your parent survey. Safety is always a top priority with us, and you guys, and it seemed like it was, the families think it's very, very safe, which is great, and it's up 13%. Could you explain what changed?
I think, well, one thing I think that's changed is consistency. Being there for myself, you know, it's really helpful for them to, for me to build relationships, for our staff to build relationships. So we've been able to do that over the last couple of years, and I think that's been very helpful. That always feels good to know that you can count on something, and so I think that's a piece of it. And I think overall, our staff has really been making an effort to connect with parents and to communicate with our parents. I really believe that's it. Our next step, though, is to not only see the parents feel that good, but we really want our students to feel that good as well about the campus and their learning.
Thank you.
Trustee Krefan?
Thank you, President Singh. Just want to thank you and thank you, Principal Mullen, for your presentation. Special congratulations to that second-grade teachers who saw that huge increase in their ELA scores. Just had a quick question about, like my colleagues mentioned about chronic absenteeism. When we're dealing with a rate that's nearly 40%, what are the barriers that you may have heard from the community about getting our kids to school?
Specifically, one of the barriers, I believe, is just understanding the impact of students missing. I think it's easy to perceive that if a student is even excused absent, right? That it's okay, but it still represents time away from the classroom. So I think just kind of breaking through that, because they're not all unexcused absences, right? I think that will be helpful. I think not only incentivizing our students in classrooms, but being aware of this, of individual cases, so that we can meet them where they're at, not just bypass them as a student who's just not there, but working with those parents specifically. That's what we really want to do more of this year.
Thank you, Principal Mullen.
Thank you, Dr. Mullen, for your comments and for the presentation. I was just wondering, because we're piloting, rather, we piloted last year the Reading Core program. Could you share a little bit about it, how it's being implemented at Teague?
Okay, so the AmeriCorp tutors. So we haven't started them yet. So we haven't seen the benefit, but we believe we will. Just having full-time tutors on campus to support our kids, I think we're going to see some great progress out of them.
Thank you. Very excited to see that. And if you could share a little bit about the pantry opening on Friday?
Yes, thank you. I believe our, the opening will be on the 24th? This Friday? Thank you very much. Be this Friday. And we, that's just another great thing that is in our grasp, right? Having a food pantry right, like, right there. So I look forward to our parents making use of it. I look forward to how we can partner with organizations to help stock that pantry and just let our families know what we can do for them.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we invite Principal Bolger from Central Online Homeschool to join us.
We're this down. Hello, everyone. Hello to our trustees and Superintendent Davis. I want to first start off by sharing with you our mission statement. On the home screen right here, you'll see that it says, "Partnering with Families to Equip Students for Life's Journey." That's one of the pieces that you'll notice that in each of those pictures that are up there, there is a partnership going on. And that partnership with the families is we, our partnership with families is the most important part of how we can connect with our students to get them to, up and through, the educational process. One of the things that we do is, in that first top photo, you'll see that we partner with Central Unified Safe Team, and we offer social supports and opportunities for our students to interact with one another and to develop friendships, and through the creation of a Lego club. And then the picture below that is an art club that was also developed with partnership with Central Foundation Grant, and we were able to purchase a variety of art media so students could come together in a stress-free environment and socialize and come together with, and be able, a little bit older students there as well. And then the bottom picture is the pinnacle of the year, which culminates with our seniors' graduation ceremony. And I also want to thank you all for participating and being a part of that ceremony, because it means so much to our school and to our students. Also, the picture with the orange shirts, that is the creation of our student leadership under the guidance of Dr. Sarah Yost, and she has facilitated several community service opportunities for students. And what you see there is the Big Fresno Cleanup, and that's our students out there participating with that. And she did that for a few events. So celebrations. We are a K-12 school, as you know. We have data from our elementary and then also from our secondary. I'm going to go over the elementary from, the data from the elementary first. So in looking at that, we had 113 students enrolled in our school, and in those enrollments, or students enrolled in 286 courses. And of those 286 courses, the average time that students spent in each course was about 54 hours. The average that a student should be spending in a course is about 40 hours. And so we see that there's a little discrepancy there. So that's something that we really want to, we're adjusting this school year. The overall progress of our students has been very strong in that they are completing the course at an average completion of 94% with a grade of 82, averaging about 82, which is a B there, so. And with that, going down to the secondary, we have, we had 223 students enrolled in 1,200 courses. On average, they spent about 47 hours in active time, and in Ingenuity, that's the program we use, they're able to delineate whether there's idle time or active time. And so we see that there's this very active time going on with our students, with our 12th graders spending a majority of, most of their time in the coursework. And so they do more than even the 47 hours that you see up there. And that's, again, a course should be about 40 hours. And then what you also see up there is the student average for finishing their courses, which we celebrate at 85%, however, we would, or 86%, but we would really like it to be up to 90%, at least, that there are at least 90% progress through the curriculum. And then students who had to retake a class or they wanted to get another credit retrieval or for a better grade, we saw that 32% average point gain from the pre-test to the post-test. And so that's a significant gain that we're proud of with our students. And then again, the ratio of completion is at 86% there. The other piece of it is that you'll see in my, later on, when we have our academic game plan that we develop, that will be a goal that we set out for our students, is having that 90% completion rate. As we progress through, our staff has been trained in virtual engagement strategies, and they have made a commitment to spend four weeks at least on one virtual engagement strategy with their students, and then go on to the next virtual engagement strategy. That way, it helps keep our students more motivated. And then also, our students come from a lot of different backgrounds and various experiences, and with that comes a lens of how they perceive their environment. And there could be, with that, they have, all students have choices. And so there's some good choices and some not-so-great choices, right? And the other part that is, that is always, is relationships. And so we know that there's choices, there's relationships, and the ability of how we have those relationships is based on principles. And how we develop that is through the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. And what we're doing is a book study with our secondary students of the Seven Habits, and it's written in a way that the students can understand, and it's a way to motivate them and have conversation, so they can build those skills to help them be motivated, to build those, make smart choices, and to have relationships with all different types of people. And then, and our littles, our little owls or owlets, they're learning about Owl's Rise, which are the expectations that we have for them. And we're also launching the Owl's Nest for them, and that is a way for students to earn incentives. And again, it's, the motivation is the big piece there. And then we also recognize our Student of the Month with student shout-outs, and this year we'll be adding in some videos for those for our students. And then we're also doing a WASC self-study, and that is to evaluate how we are doing with the goals that we had set forth in 2021. And our school attendance, it increased significantly because there was some discrepancy in the way that attendance was being reported, because we had, there was three different methods, and so we were able to improve our attendance significantly, up to 98%, which is fantastic. We were so proud. And then based on Panorama, the survey results, families wanted to see more social activities for their students. So I listed out there the ones that we committed to and were able to provide for our families last year. And then in addition, you'll see the enrichment up there, and that enrichment is something that we're adding on. So if we'll go to the next slide. And so with that, what we've found is that students need those opportunities for enrichment, but they also need opportunities for, we're calling or rebranding academic support to be called scholarly commitment. And so we want them to have that commitment to their education. And so one of the things that we're doing is we were looking at the results, and we instituted common assessments for the first time last year with the NWEA map for our secondary students, I-Ready for our other students, our kinder through eighth grade, and then, of course, the S-Back. And with the Smarter Balance Assessment, we were able to see that though we brought them in person for testing because we wanted to make sure that they had a, there was fidelity or validity to the assessment, but what we learned from that experience was that there was testing fatigue. And so from, because of the session being held within one day. And so with that, we know that we're going to need to readjust that schedule for this new year with the S-Back, so our scores can then reflect, maybe not the testing fatigue that the students were experiencing. In moving through that, one of the other pieces that we want to do is with the difference between a traditional setting and online is the instruction is coming from the online program and from the parents. And so what we want to do is bridge that gap between what the students are learning or concepts that they need to develop, and then teaching that to our families and to our parents, especially of our younger students, of how they can utilize some strategies that we as professionals know how to use through a variety of seminars and workshops. And with that, we also, we want to, the math lab. I need to talk to you about that, sorry. So with the math lab, we saw from the results of some of our assessments that that's a weakness for our students. And so we thought, okay, we'll have a math lab, we'll create a math lab, and we thought, how are we going to staff that? And so we weren't able to do as we had thought originally, so we came up with a solution. And our solution is this, is that we're going to have all K-12 students take the I-Ready, and they're going to be strategically placed into a math-focused group. And then our PLCs, which our teachers are working on matching student name with student need with strategic grouping within that math lab time in the afternoon. And then, again, we'll be revising our testing schedule as well. And then again, we'll be revising our, our testing schedule as well. Let's see, um, I guess the next one. Okay, so these are some great celebrations. You'll see the big pizza, pizza up there because everyone loves pizza, right? So how do we motivate our kiddos, um, to get them to come to school, um, through various celebrations is, is through um pizza? Um, we have family literacy nights, we are engaging our parents that way. We have a Share Your Story winner, and that is through Leap for Literacy. What it is, is we had a program of K-five of students who were taken through the writing process. And in that, they then submitted their, they went through all the different parts of it. They submitted their work, the work was then submitted to another panel who then selected out of six of our students, one of our students to be published. And so she will be published and her story is um, it's called Vegan Dog. And so the vegan dog and how the dog is vegan. And anyways, it's cute, it's gonna be illustrated by a, a children's illustrator, and it's going to be um published, and there's a big kickoff for it on November eleventh in Georgia. Um, so that's, that's a piece that is a little disheartening. I'm trying to figure out how I can get her there. So that's one piece there. And then, um, we, our families have consistently attended our STEM, weekly STEM uh meetings. And that is activities with our Mrs. Puerto, our K-two teacher, and she does a fantastic job in providing uh various activities, and it's kinda like Family Engagement Night, but uh on a smaller scale, really small scale, weekly. And then we had early grads this last year, um, and we had several of them participated in the Fresno City College High School Enrichment Program. And in addition to that, uh, we have um SEL Connections through our Suite 360 for our secondary. Our intervention counselor as well is very involved with our students. And then Second Step for our elementary students, um, in social skills and that sort of thing. Uh, again, we rebranded our scholarly commitments or academic support to scholarly commitments. And also we're offering enrichment on Mondays and Fridays afternoons, and that's for activities in art, coding, uh, uh, and um, uh, literature, literature groups, um, small, um, novel studies, huh? Um, and then also the math lab that we're offering in addition to, in the afternoon as well. So, um, I also want to give a big shout out to my staff up there. They are, their tenacity, their encouragement, their positivity, their commitment to work alongside our families. And students ensure our central core values of commitment, achievement, resilience, empathy, and service. And they're woven into their practices and their interactions with all of our students every day. So that in a snapshot is Central Online Homeschool and Owl's Rise. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Bolger. Any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Corio?
Thank you. You mentioned uh staff's focus on a four, four weeks on engagement. Can you talk a little bit about how we're measuring engagement and ensuring that our students are active? Because you also talked about absenteeism, and it probably is a silly question. But how do we, is there a distinction between how we're measuring engagement and absenteeism? Since a lot of these students are completing coursework on their own, right?
Right, so they're doing the coursework on their own, and the engagement piece and the enrichment piece is to help build that connectedness to the school. That's the main focus of it. And because, and during our WAAS school and during our Panorama survey, all of that came back that they wanted more enrichment opportunities because the academics is focused at home with the online curriculum. I hope, did I answer your question?
Yeah, you did. And the other thing you mentioned, which I think is, is great, is just the change in mindset and just, and even in the words of the scholarly, um, scholar, I'm sorry.
It's alright.
Uh, yes. Scholarly, scar-
Scholarly commitment.
There we go, scholarly commitment.
Yes, I know, it's a mouthful.
So can you talk about the importance in just changing that and, and just how students respond differently?
So one of, what we've, we offer tiered support, and that tiered support is offered um through the scholarly commitment and then also through the, the lab work. And so tier two would be the scholarly commitment to offer synchronous time for the students to come in and work on their coursework with uh a, an academic advisor. And then the other piece of that is the uh enrichment piece is in the afternoon to also engage those that may not need the interventions. But then we also have a tier-three intervention, and that tier-three intervention is where we're having the math lab come in. And that's where um the focused student name, student need work will be.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from the board? Can I ask Principal, um, Bolger, I know you, you shared in terms of um fixing some of the issues to, to where we saw that such a dramatic increase in, in attendance. Can you just share a little bit about sort of what, what was the process and, and what you all discovered?
Yes. So for the first, uh, in the beginning with COVID and the way that uh the, the information that we learned along the way was rolled, that week I came to learn is that there's three different ways to take attendance. And um, there's the asynchronous, the synchronous, there's live instruction. And then within that, there is student sample work that gets turned in. Then in addition to that, there is um the hours, the amount of time that a student is uh logged into Edgenuity to equal the amount of time that they would spend in a minimum-day classroom. It's the four hours a day. So as we, the evolution of central online school has come about, we have learned that the method in which we were, we were actually being a little too strict on attendance. And so we have evolved to where we are, um, the student work samples, the learning periods, those go together, and that's what accounts for attendance now.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions or comments, we thank you for joining us tonight.
Alright, thank you.
Next we turn to our superintendent and our board for any communications.
Alright, I've got just a couple of things. We've had a great start to the new school year, and I thank all of our administrators who are here this evening who uh made all the plans and made sure everything was ready to go and have, have made for a great uh start of the year and a smooth start welcoming all of our students back. So thank you for all of that. Uh, fall sports are starting. I believe uh practice for middle school started today, elementary started yesterday. Um, football teams were off to a great start, both with a win this last week. So um, we encourage everybody to, to stay connected and, and cheer on our groups that are just getting started. Yesterday, the application for the School Facilities Planning Committee did uh go out to our public and our community. Um, for those that are unfamiliar with this, that would be public. I know you all are aware. Um, the committee is going to be tasked with reviewing Central High School's program design and exploring ways to increase attendance and look at the facilities. Uh, we have a few applicants already who have submitted applications, and we're eager for our community who uh would like to be interested in that to submit an application by Monday, September fourth. Uh, we're looking forward to getting that group started and bringing to you, the board, um, some recommendations and feedback from that committee. And then I would like to also point out just a little bit of data. I'm very, very happy uh to share with you that our attendance this first week is at ninety-five point six percent. And um, so I thank all of our families and all of our schools that have been doing activities to get everybody to campus. Um, by way of, of comparison, uh, prior to COVID, we start a year at about ninety-seven percent. So we can still improve, still get a couple percent more of, of students, certainly in, in classrooms where we can work with them. Um, since that time, we've been hovering around ninety-three, ninety-two percent. So very happy to see that um, we're starting the year strong with our students in classrooms, and we want to continue that. So that is all for me.
Thank you so much. Any, uh, any communications from any of our board members? I think on, sorry? Ben, just, uh, I just want to kind of obviously share just a, a warm, the warmest welcome back to school. And I also wanted to share our, our well wishes um with our, with our Cuda president as well. Uh, next we turn to our consent agenda. Oh, sorry, next we turn to comments from the public. If uh anyone wishes to uh address the governing board, they could, may do so at this time. We'll have three minutes of allotment, and uh Clerk Kerfond, do we have any comments?
Yes, we have, um, Diljot Singh Raj.
And, and a reminder for the public, these are for comments, not on the agenda. Great to have you, Diljot Singh Rai.
Good evening, Board Trustees, President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and District Administration. My name is Diljot Singh Rai. I'm an eleventh-grade student, as well as the Head Cultural Ambassador at Justin Garza High School. Today I stand in front of you to bring up an important issue that our school site is facing. Garza has surpassed maximum capacity for students. Our hallways, classrooms, campus mall, locker rooms, and the entire school site itself is packed with students. It is so packed that it really does take six minutes to get from one class to another. It is so packed that we are the only high school in Fresno that has an A and B lunch schedule. It is so packed that a government and economics class had forty-two students in it. It is so packed that some students aren't able to use the restrooms during break and lunch. It is so packed that the lunch line is really long, and a few students don't get lunch since they don't make it in time. Our administration team and our school site liaisons have tried their absolute best to keep control over the population, but how much can they do? I have a class that has twenty, that has room for twenty-four students, and there were thirty-three students on the first day. Nine of those students did not have a chair to sit at. I do not blame our counseling department, and neither do I blame any of our amazing teachers because what are they supposed to do and what can they do? I hope that our board can look at solutions of maybe redrawing the school boundaries so that Central High actually has students that go there. I truly do hope that our respected board can give this issue, issue some attention and recognize that Garza is in desperate need of assistance. I hope that our board can really put into consideration what I've stated today and let us guardians stand for more. I hold your time in high regard. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Trustee, Clerk Kerfond. Any other comments from the public?
Uh, not at this time. My other comments are for an agenda item.
Thank you. We then turn to our consent agenda and um want to specifically call out the resolutions uh for, for this evening. On uh, today we will be proclaiming September eleventh through the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three as National Arts and Education Week. Uh, we want to acknowledge proclaiming August as National Immunization Awareness Month. And we also want to proclaim September tenth through the sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three as Suicide Prevention Week. We have materials in our, in our libraries, other information at our school sites, really highlighting these critical issues in our community. Do I have a motion with regards to consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis, we have a second by Trustee Corio. Roll call vote.
Trustee Corio?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Kerfond?
Aye.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Sellers?
Yes.
Trustee Solis?
Yes.
President Singh?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. We move on to our action items. Our first um action item tonight is to approve, approve change of location for Central Unified Board Meetings. Superintendent Davis?
Thank you. Uh, tonight I'd like to bring you a discussion and a recommendation that for at least the next two school years, uh, we look at changing the location for our board meetings for the specific purpose of the use of this facility. Uh, we know that we share this space with performances of visual and performing arts, and now uh, that space will be shared by both Central East, Central High, and also uh the Justin Garza Theater and Performance Program. And so you'll see in conversation with both our technology staff on how to recreate all of the technology needed to continue to maintain um YouTube access from home and, and the appropriate uh resources. Uh, we've identified two possible locations, the district office, uh, room four and room one could be used for uh both components as well as uh an option at Justin Garza High School in their lecture hall. Uh, and I will share at this point in time, uh, they are not um scheduling lots of activities in their lecture hall. Uh, but I am sensitive to that could change. Uh, right now on their schedule, it looks to be available. Uh, the district office does not have things on Tuesday evenings. We do run a college class on Monday evenings, but uh, there are no conflicts with that one. So happy to answer questions. Uh, I guess the only other thing I, uh, in thinking about it, this would need to be, if it was something that you're interested in doing, we would need some time to notice this out to public, um, put the equipment together. So we're really talking about no change probably until October, uh, to give us time to uh communicate that, if, if that is the wishes of this group. Um, happy to answer questions that I can for you and, and.
Thank you. Questions and comments from the board? I'd say, Trustee Corio and Trustee Kerfond?
I mean, I have no problem with moving. I've been concerned with, especially when we have um performances going on that we're interrupting the ability of our students. And I know I ran for this position to support our students and our community, and so I'm happy to, to have our meetings anywhere else. Um, but I do have some questions. For the district office, what's the capacity of that room? And can we consider different layouts? Because I know when we've held our workshops, I don't, I don't necessarily like that layout that we currently have um, with the audience facing our back and we can't see anyone.
Right, so um, capacity uh is more than what I would say is comfortable. I would say we have, when we have meetings, seventy-five to eighty people in there, and we have more seats than that, but I think that would be um, a max capacity for us to operate on. And so to that end, uh, if we know there is an item where we've been notified or we have an idea there's a large public that would be planning to come, uh, we would uh speak with you about relocating to a larger space, um, which, which can be done if, if needed. Um, the layout for it absolutely would have to adjust. Uh, the meetings you're referring to would be a work session where it is intentionally with you focused to the speakers and, and um, for something like this, we would want it uh reworked. So happy to get input from you if that was the location you chose to make sure it will, it'll work in terms of the public access and communication.
And then what's the capacity at the lecture hall at Justin Garza? And I know you mentioned it's not frequently used. Um, I'd like, if we, if the board, if the consensus of the board is to use the lecture hall, that we have some protocol in place so that again, we're not interfering with any programming and that our students still take priority over our board meetings. But that we still have sufficient time to notice the public and the media of our location.
So capacity is a couple hundred if you were to sit in all seats. Uh, the protocol would be challenging. If it's a space we're gonna use, we would block it off on the calendar. So we would have to work with the school to see if they had a special event coming up to give us plenty of notice for that public notification.
Thank you.
You bet.
Trustee Kerfond?
Uh, again, Trustee Corio is taking my comments. Um, but yeah, I wanted to ask about fire, uh, fire safety capacity. Um, if we were to take all of the, uh, one of the people in this room right now, uh, would they fit in that uh room floor at the district office safely?
I'm a terrible judge of counting right now to see. I know our principals and their co-administrators, so doubling this group right over here plus our directors of all departments fit in room one. So, uh, I would think it would be close.
Be close.
Or about seventy-eighty.
So potentially might be.
That's what I was guessing, about seventy, seventy-five.
Potentially it might be a safer bet to go with the lecture hall, um, depending on how we organize that space in the, in the district office.
It could be. I, I tried to give you a couple of options for it, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Board Chair?
Trustees Solis. Oh, sorry. Trustee Cervantes, sorry.
Not a problem. Totally in favor of moving whatever we expect, best with the students and their needs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees Solis and then trustee Carrillo?
I'd like to throw out a suggestion that we try it at each one of the sites. There's only two of them, and see which one works best.
I was going to say that my first choice would be the district office, so we don't have any disruption, but I do like the idea that trustee Solis just provided of scheduling a meeting at each one, and then the third could be back at the district office, and we can set a plan from there on.
If trustee Carrillo has a motion for that, I'm happy to second. And I compromise.
I'll move, you said not until October? Do you need a motion, do you need us to take action now?
Yes, we need direction from you in terms of the move, I would say, to start noticing and putting equipment together. I think the one adjustment in terms of protection for the team up there in the booth, I think the idea of moving back and forth, we probably need to say it for a couple of meetings in one spot, giving them just one week turnaround. I, I don't want to speak on their behalf. If that's the goal, we'll work towards that, but I would like to be clear that it may, they may not be able to flip the equipment over in one week's time to, to do one meeting back to back, if that makes sense.
Okay. So could we, and really talking to our, our team, can we host our meetings in October at the district office and November at Justin Garza, since it's just one meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'll move to hold the regular meetings of the board for the month of October at the district office, and for the month of November at Justin Garza, and for the board to take action in December to identify a permanent location for the next two years.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Carrillo. We have a second by trustee Kervon. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Carrillo?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Kervon?
Aye.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Sellers?
Yes.
Trustee Solis?
Yes.
President Singh?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Next we turn to item number two, deny the Justin Garza High School Phase Two, Increment Three Scope of Work. Mr. Rodriguez?
Good evening, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. Tonight this item returns to, to the board regarding the Justin Garza Phase Two, Increment Three Scope of Work at the soccer fields, which is part of the athletics complex. To recap, in order for PBK architects to foster and expedited process through DSA, the athletics complex project was broken up into three increments, which included individual scopes of work for each increment. Phase Two, Increment One includes all of the underground infrastructure, soccer fields, ball fields, and parking lot. This project is currently in progress. Phase Two, Increment Two consists of all the buildings for the athletics complex. This project is currently resides at DSA, and we should be expecting final approval soon. Phase Two, Increment Three Scope of Work, it consists of filling in the existing ponding basin for future footsall fields, facilities, and civil work that includes relocating existing storm drain tie-ins to the flood controlled basin located on the Granville Development off of Grantland Avenue. As we have all recognized recently, we are experiencing a period of nearly unprecedented increases in construction costs, from labor shortages to increases in building materials which add to the cost of pending projects. Since the start of the pandemic, these large scale school projects across California are being built in a climate of steep, steeply rising costs, and many districts are necessitating adjustments in planning and timelines as a result of this new reality. Administration has provided information, including a cash flow analysis for Measure D and estimated costs in order to assist the board in determining the next steps regarding Phase Two, Increment Three, and whether it should be excluded from this project. Administration is recommending that the board take action and approve the denial of Increment Three, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions and comments from the board? Trustee Mayling?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming, too. I realize there is a demand for this. And one of the things that I've, first and foremost, I, I, I wish the verbiage was changed on this, and it said delayed, not deny. Reason I say that is, I'm not against it. I, I think we need to reach out and either get some community partnerships with this, with the local developers. For example, the infrastructure, drainage infrastructure, I think that could be helped with. But more importantly, we have all this, one of our biggest expenses, import. We've got a development across the street that they're going to put four or 500 homes in. They're going to need another ponding basin for flood control. They're going to have to pay to export that, and now we're paying to import it. So we, I think realistically, we should get all the dirt for free. I mean, they're literally driving across the street. If you can make that happen, I would be more inclined to say yes right away with this. And also, the irrigation kind of concerns me. Have we talked to Fresno City to see if we can get some purple pipe water or reclaimed water for this site? Number one, it's going to be expensive. Number two, we're not going to have the water in the future to be able to irrigate this. That's my concern. And also, I want, I mean, if we can get some community partnerships as far as, my thing is safety, maintenance, and water. And if you could fulfill all those concerns of mine, I'm ready to roll on this.
If I may address one of those issues that you have brought up, I, I don't believe that the city purple pipe has, has gotten far enough up, up north. I've been in, in communication with the city of Fresno, and we are talking of areas in the south area, mainly Roosevelt and Madison Elementary School. So I don't believe it's not up on our, west of 99.
All right. I mean, if you can confirm that, you know, this isn't going to happen overnight, whether we decide this tonight or not, but potentially if we can get with the city to see if they could extend that. I also know that there's two new wells across the street. Could we get some water from that? Which I think we need, we need to research all of our options before we make this decision. I mean, I'm, I'm all for it. It's, it's, it's got a big price tag on it, and I think we can cut this cost in half if we decide to do it right.
I've noted your comments, so I'll, I'll look into it.
Trustee Carrillo, then we'll go to trustee Sellers, and then trustee Solis.
So first trustee Mayling, the board can decide to make whatever motion is, is consensus of the board. I'm, I'm kind of just confused with the presentation of the item, because initially, this came to us in June with a recommendation for approval. This board, no boards have discussed footsalls before. I went through and looked at the, at our agendas for the past two years. I didn't find any maps showing this footsall. So I would just like some clarification as far as, I know we approved an architectural fees. How much have we already spent in drawing the footsall? And then, as you're, as you're looking for that, I'd like to hear some feedback from our administration as far as what's going to be the benefit in putting this footsall now for our students. We know that if we delay this, whether we do it for a future meeting, for future years, the cost is going to be higher, there's going to be no money, because we inherited Garza High School 20 years and something ago. And the only thing that continues to happen is the cost is increasing. So if we can provide our community and our students a benefit now, yes, it's $12 million, but we spent a lot of money on other items that don't directly, immediately support our students and community. So if you can provide that number, and then just kind of talk about the benefit to our district and our community if this gets approved.
So the, what we've paid to, to date in architectural fees is $26,000. So, and that includes a, a few drawings and a schematic design. That's, that's all we have, right? I don't believe we incurred any type of civil drawings as of, as of yet, so $26,000.
Thank you.
And then as far as the benefit to our community? And our, including our students?
And our students, well, it's a tremendous benefit. Currently, right now, Justin Garza does not have any green space, so the, so the students don't have a place to, to, you know, go out to recreational PE or, or any of that. So completing this project would, would give them, whether you go with footsall or whether you cover it with grass, would give them that opportunity to at least, you know, have the, the marching bands practice on it, the students to conduct PE. Currently, right now, we do not have any kind of green space.
Okay. And then, I'm kind of confused. So you were asking, trustee Mayling, you were asking about irrigation. The footsall is not real grass, right?
It's, it's turf. It's a mixture of artificial turf and, and, and sod.
So was your concern with irrigation as to the footsall, or just in general?
Yeah, so that's, that's a good question. It goes back to, is it green space or is it turf? But yeah, ultimately, we have to irrigate something. And I, I, we, I mean, we are going to be in another drought. There's no question.
But I think the irrigation you were speaking of is, is the civil, is, is the, the drainage, correct?
Well, that's, that wasn't what I was, I mean, that was my, one of my questions, if, if, if one of the construction companies could help us put that drainage in. But ultimately, the irrigation, I mean, my, my maintenance, I can only see, just in my, in, in my district, that when it's 110 degrees outside, everything's dead.
So this is public works, so everything needs to be bit out. So we just can't, you know, I mean, it'd be, it'd be great if we can find a partnership, but we'd have to abide by the current laws. And dirt is cheap. The, 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 the problem is, is that the trucking, the trucking is, 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 is the, the big cost in this.
Yeah, excuse me, but I think you missed my point. They have to pay for this dirt to get out of their site. They're going to have to export it sooner or later. Why don't we get the benefit of them exporting it into our basin right across the street for free? I mean, I think we could at least compromise and not spend $2 million bucks on it.
No, I, I agree, but there, there are some constraints on our end as far as Department of Toxic Substance Control, there's a lot of entities that have their hands in it, so I just can't bring or import any type of dirt.
No, I see what you're saying with that, but either way, we're going to have the same issues. So whether we get it across the street or across town, we're still having these same environmental issues.
Thank you. I noted your comment, so we'll look into it.
Trustees Sellers, and then we'll take comments from the public as soon as we get our pods. Solis is next.
I've got a whole handful of questions, if you'd like to just move to give the public opportunity to, to speak, or?
Go ahead first, and then we'll, we'll make sure you open that opportunity.
Mr. Rodriguez, the flood control basin, as I understand it, within the Granville property that we would be tying into is currently too small for, to supply or provide the need for the, the neighborhood as well as our basin?
So the development, the Granville Development has already dug out their capacity for what they are going to build. So now it's upon the district to excavate for our capacity, which is, I believe, is 33, somewhere around 33 acre feet of, of capacity, which is substantial.
Okay. Do you know where that basin is at? The Granville's, where's the location exactly?
It's more along Grantland, it's between Gettysburg and Ashland on Grantland Avenue, more on the, on the Ashland side, on the west end.
Okay. My next question is, how will we tie our basin runoff into that facility, or that basin?
So along Grantland, there's, there, there is storm drain, 30-inch storm drain utilities already there. It would just need to be, from what I've seen on the drawings, preliminary drawings, is that there is a connection point at Grantland and Ashland, where we would have to go in, down in the manhole, the contractor would need to plug it and unplug the other, the other pertinence to this particular storm drain going to that. There's some quite extensive work where they may have to do some road work and excavate a manhole in order to tie it in correctly.
So as of right now, that development is essentially in its early phases, it's a dirt lot. Is it going to be much more of a challenge for us to tie into that later on when that neighborhood community is developed?
That's a really good question. I, I believe Lennar is in that same vicinity, and they are, I believe they're ready to get going on their development, which is between Ashland and, and Gettysburg. So yes, I, I, I believe so.
So there is a potential that if we delay this project for an extended amount of time, we miss our window?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Superintendent Davis, do we have the, the results of the survey from the, that went out to the community?
We do, and that's what I was hopeful to add. We did survey community per our last conversation. 80% are interested in footsall, excited about it becoming a part. Most don't play it currently, but are interested in being a part of program. I know our coaches that are here as well also shared that they are using it, and our PE classes are using the types of skills and drills in footsall, just on our hard surface courts right now.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go ahead and take a break for, for now.
Trustee Solis?
Exactly why I had my handle as well.
Trustee Kervon, if you'd like to invite the comments from the public?
Thank you, President Singh. Our first speaker is Eli Gallegos.
Three minutes. Perfect. Good evening, Board, Board Members and Central Unified Administration. My name is Eli Gallegos. First, I do teach biology here at East Campus, and second, I am the Director of Sport for Boys Soccer. And I can tell you, since 2006, I've been pouring my blood, sweat, and tears into this program. And so to see the growth and witness the opportunities that, that we've presented in the district, and to, to see them be taken away, it's, it's very emotional for me. Soccer interest has always been heavy in Central Unified School District, even without some of the, the practice facilities. Both the, the boys programs and the, the girls programs have moved players on to NCAA Division One, Division Two, Division Three, NAIA. A lot of kids go to junior college and then transfer out, and we've even had one represent Team USA on the women's side. So think of what we can accomplish with new facilities. It, it, it really, it hits a heartstring, and, and I can't, can't continue to, to, to see some of the, the, just misunderstandings and miscommunications between footsall and green space. I think there needs to be a separate meeting where we get some clarification on all of that, and we have tons of resources for that in, in the Central Valley. Sport facilities have always been a topic of conversation with the addition of green space here at East Campus. Soccer's finally been able to be used for practices, strength and conditioning, offseason workouts, which has been tremendous for us during the summers, and it really does eliminate and limit the overlap with other sports, with football teams, with both guys and girls programs. With the addition of the North Fields and the footsall courts, opportunities for our district and community include and are not limited to offseason area for multiple sports and programs. Think of Rio Vista, El Capitan, Glacier Point, that's four programs for hopefully seventh and eighth grade girls and boys programs that could potentially use those facilities. use those facilities. Um, a facility for all ages to use, uh, including programs like, um, Central's, uh, United Soccer. Um, extra space for physical education, Justin Garza's right there, they could use it for PE and, uh, develop curriculum for it, which I'm more than willing to help out with. Um, an area to run skill and developmental camps, um, clinics possibly for coaching, uh, coaching staff, um, offseason elementary footsaw camps, uh, which provide, um, opportunities for fundraising for, uh, programs. Um, footsaw is, is a tool, a tool that's used for coaches to, um, allow more touches on the ball, um, practice on, um, a, a different surface, um, speed of play, there's a ton of different, um, skills that can be developed within footsaw. And there's a couple bullets that I'm gonna skip through because my time's almost up here, but I urge you to continue the completion of the footsaw facilities as promised, and you guys have, uh, agreed upon, um, for our current and future student athletes in the district community, please help to cultivate the next generation of players. This is a great opportunity that will set us apart and, uh, make us a little bit different than our competitors. Um, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Clark Kerfan, any other speakers?
Yes, our next speaker is, uh, Tony Quesada with Valley Youth Soccer League.
Good evening, uh, board members. First of all, thank you for your time. My name is, uh, Tony Quesada, and I'm a proud Central High alumni, class of two thousand and thirteen, all Grizzlies. Uh, I'm also actively engaged here district-wide as a local business owner, as well as a local soccer coach. Uh, I'm also a part, I'm also the president of Valley Youth Soccer League and a soccer coach with Valley United Soccer Club. Together, uh, we oversee over fifteen hundred kids just in the central area, not included the kids that come from Madera, Southeast Fresno, Fowler, all these little areas that come to our schools to practice and to play. Yes? Um, I stand firmly in support of the footsaw courts. This project does prove to be very ambitious, and I'll tell you why. Because if this project does go through, Central Unified will be the first school in all California to have five footsaw courts. From San Diego to Sacramento, Central Unified will be the first, and that's very, very ambitious, and we're all for it here. We're all for it here, okay? Um, so this is a pioneering decision from you guys here. Um, sorry. So this does prove to be very ambitious, very pioneered decision to incorporate a glo- global proven sport into our community. Um, so, you know, footsaw court, you, you ask, what's the benefit of it, right? The benefit is that it offers an avenue for, uh, comprehensive player development. It requires minimal maintenance and investment. Once you set up those courts, that's all you have to do. You don't have to water it, you don't have to trim it, trim it or garden it, nothing. Courts are there, that's it, like basketball courts, yes? Um, there was a distinction, is it turf, is it green space, is it grass? It, it could be both, it could be a mixture of, and again, we could have a separate con- conversation about this, and we can see the ones they have in Brazil, in Argentina, in Europe, we could see the ones they have there and copy from them to have here, yes? Um, again, professional soccer players like Lionel Messi, Neymar, Ronaldinho, Cristiano Ronaldo, they all grew up playing footsaw in their respective countries, and they praise it for allowing them to develop, uh, that talent and tactical skills. Um, like Coach Eli said, footsaw's the greatest training tool for player development in soccer. Um, not only that, the cultural impact footsaw will have in the Central Unified District is really important. It'll unite people from different backgrounds, different cultures, just by playing footsaw. Um, again, um, I, I urge you guys to please, just think about it, engage with us, we're here to support, to offer you guys our guidance, our knowledge. The kids here would much rather be at practice kicking the ball, um, but today they took a day off, uh, in support for these courts. So, um, again, we just urge you, um, to, to please talk about it, approve it if we can, and to have these footsaw courts. Thank you.
The final card I have is for Pedro Navarro Cruz with Love, Peace, and Football.
Hello, good evening, board members. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, my name is Pedro Navarro Cruz. I'm a founder of Love, Peace, and Football, a local grassroots movement committed to fostering inclusivity in soccer within the USA. Our mission revolves around empowering Fresno communities through volunteerism, no-cost, uh, youth soccer and footsaw camps, civic engagement, and organized pickup games. Today, I address you to lend my wholehearted support to, to the proposed athletic improvements with a specific focus on advocating for the inclusion of the footsaw courts in your plan. As we consider the remarkable impact that footsaw has had in prominent figures like Lionel Messi and Cristiano Ronaldo during informative years, the significant of this role, uh, in player development becomes evident. The connection is undeniable, making it a clear choice for enhancing player skills. However, I would like to underscore the broader impact that footsaw courts bring to our community in a landscape where youth soccer player development de- demands substantial financial investment and average of two thousand to, to five thousand dollars per child annually, footsaw court stands as a beacon of accessibility. By integrating these courts into your plan, you have the potential to set aside precedent that democratizes, democratizes player development transcending economic barriers. Moreover, footsaw courts offer an array of advantages they are cost-effective to establish and maintain, making them a wise investment. Additionally, by providing Central Unified School District student athletes with access to these courts, you equip them with a notable advantage over their counterparts over other districts. Um, this advantage translates into enhanced skills, confidence, and opportunities for success. I wholeheartedly encourage the board to move forward with the inclusion of the footsaw courts in the plan. The decision holds the power to, to positively in- impact player development, accessibility, and overall competitiveness of student athletes. Uh, as, um, Tony was sharing earlier, there's, and the previous speaker as well, uh, the courts are, um, they, they require no maintenance, right? Like, you don't have to water them, uh, they're mostly on hard surfaces, um, so it's, water is not an issue when it comes to, to footsaw courts. And of course, for the, uh, I'm not too sure what the plans are for the soccer fields, but there are artificial turf options as, as, as well. Um, and lastly, I just want to underscore again that these, these top-class players that grew up playing footsaw in their countries, uh, they were, they grew up poor, but they had access to this, and that's non-existent here. However, these courts can start changing that, but, uh, thank you all for your time and your consideration.
We want to give ample time for our community. If they'd like to give a comment, you could fill out a card and, um, it'll be passed to Clark Kerfan. Um, I know in the meantime, trustee Cervantes would like a, had a comment or question?
I have a, my question is, um, I'm looking at that bid for almost thirteen million dollars. Is that strictly for the concession, the fence, and the footsaw courts, or does that also incorporate the soccer field?
It is just footsaw only.
Um, and second, um, I think with about eighty percent of the survey, on the public saying that they want this, uh, we, we do have discretionary over the public funds, and if this is what the public wants, I, I kind of hint, go back to what, uh, trustee Mayden was saying, I think we can do it cheaper. Uh, with that, I would like to propose tabling this, to do a deeper dive, to see if we can come up with a better solution in a more cost-effective way, uh, to potentially make this happen without a delay.
We still have some public comments, and then we can take motions.
Thank you, President Singh. I have another comment from Zara Sellers, a parent in our school district.
Hello, I am sorry, I didn't prepare for this, but I want to say that football and, I'm talking soccer, football, right? Um, soccer and the footsaw courts are really important to our community. We had a soccer camp recently where there were, it's a very big turnout. I'm sorry, this is pretty emotional for me, so. Um, but there was a very large turnout for the, for everyone that came to this, to our soccer camps. We had over, I mean, over two hundred and, and, um, all the way up until thirteen years old, and another over two hundred after that. And I think that you don't, you guys don't realize how big the soccer community is. Soccer is actually the biggest sport worldwide versus over football. So it's, I think, you don't understand that it doesn't cost that much for a student to play, it's equitable for everyone. You need cleats in a ball, or shoes in a ball, or no shoes. It's just, it's this way, it's, everyone can play, and there's a huge community. So sorry, I'm emotional, but I don't know how to, how to express how important this is for everyone.
Piers, we still have another comment from the public?
Yes, I'm getting another comment. Thank you. From Jasmine Guzman.
Hello, board. Uh, sorry for the mess, I just got off the footsaw game, actually. Um, and I'm here representing women and girls who grew up, uh, playing soccer and, uh, being a part of the community, and we're basically tired of being sidelined, um, as a sport and as a demographic. We want to be seen, we want to be heard, we want to play more than anything, and we want to have a place, a dedicated place to, to play. We have been, you know, um, kind of getting into like different spaces, um, volleyball courts, tennis courts, uh, places that aren't for us, you know, and kind of like taking, uh, over their spaces, and we kind of, we just want a dedicated space, and I know it will benefit the community as a, and especially like women development and girls' soccer academy here in, in Central Unified. And footsaw is very, um, good with developing those skills, such as like, it emphasizes skills, quick passing, ball control due to the limited space, and I know maybe not all of you guys may know what it is, but we're here to help you guys and show you guys like what it is, and just reach out to any of us here that came out to the meeting. So I hope you guys take this time to listen to us. Thank you.
And, uh, next comment, hope I get this right, uh, Flo Chung with, uh, Valley United Soccer.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Flo Chung. I'm a parent of a Valley United, uh, player, but I'm also a high school principal in Fresno Unified at Design Science Middle College High School, where I have a lot of students from Central Unified coming to our school as well. But, um, I have players from, um, oh, sorry, students from Central Unified at my school that play for Valley United. Um, soccer is a huge sport and, um, a lot of, there are not a lot of options for us parents, uh, for extracurriculars, you know, so besides football, soccer is one of the larger sports where many kids can participate, both, um, boys and girls. And as we know, as we're coming out of pandemic, um, for mental health purposes, we need to, uh, provide more facilities for these extracurriculars and sports, and we know it's good for team building, collaboration, creating those social networking and family and community, uh, ties as well. Uh, I have this comment on Valley United, I mean, they use the fields not only every evening, but on the weekends as well, and the games are out there, parents are out there in the sun, it's like super hot, but kids love it, and it's just so powerful to kind of home-grow these athletes, and just having, hearing them describe how they move on to college to play the sport, and even professionally, and we're trying to home-grow fuegos here as well, because it creates a huge collective urban and community identity as well. So I just wanted to just give, as a parent, and also as an educator, how great it would be. And, you know, many of our kids that go to Valley United choose to go to Valley United because it's a of its affordability, and of course, if our district, the district provides it as well, it's great, because some of the students, some of our students are going to Clovis, and it's so obscenely expensive, and there's not many o- other options in the valley that it's just really would be very powerful, Central Unified created that, because there is a huge thoroughfare on ninety-nine where, um, Coach Tony was describing, kids are coming from Madera, Merced, all the way down from really by CLA coming to play for Valley United. So to have more facilities for our kids would be just incredible. Thank you.
Uh, our next comment is, uh, Rarello Rodriguez with Valley United Soccer. Apologies if I mispronounced that name.
Hello, uh, thank you guys for your time. Um, yeah, just to add on to what everyone else is saying, um, this is really important, like, on a whole different scale, you know, like, when we're talking about competition, um, you know, like, as an American, like, um, you know, and being an alumni, I went to McKinley, El Cap, um, you know, even Central, like, uh, I know my dreams were taken away at sixth grade, um, when I made it all the way in track, you know, uh, I was running hurdles, um, I couldn't go to the Junior Olympics in, uh, in Iowa, uh, for financial reasons, you know, so that taught me a lot that, you know, we're really prideful when it comes down to here in sports, right? Uh, baseball, um, you know, football, track, uh, basketball, you name it. Uh, America, like, you know, as an American, I'm proud to say, like, we're one of the best in every aspect of it, you know, but soccer, it gets, it gets, you know, it gets blurry when we talk about it, you know, it gets dismissed, you know, we, we spend and invest all this time in other sports, which is cool, you know, um, I'm totally up for it, but at the same time, it's like, we need to be able, from the co- competitive side of it, we need to be able to start housing that, because soccer's becoming more and more, um, you know, mainstream, if you want to call it, like, here in America, and, you know, we need to get ahead of it, um, versus trying to come from behind and try to play catch-up, try to play catch-up with the other districts, the other schools, you know, when you look at other programs like Buchanan, Bullard, Clovis West, like, you know, even the Clovis programs in general, they get a lot of support, and that's why a lot of their programs are, are more successful than over here, you know, because they have the support, they have the support from the community, they have the support from the school district, and if we can get that same support here in soccer, I guarantee you that you guys won't be disappointed with just the com- the competitive side of it, you know, we'll represent it to the fullest, you know, championships will come, and, and the best talent will come here too, so, um, like I said, you know, uh, let's, let's not fall behind in soccer, and let's just be ahead of the, ahead of the curve. Thank you.
President Singh, I do not have any more comments at this time.
So, one question I do have, and then we'll, I know we have some motions that are being entertained. Can I ask you, Mr. Rodriguez, in terms of, what is the near, so, we will be obviously completing the five soccer courts and the, and the championship field. In this proposal is the restroom, uh, as, as well as the concessions and what, what is the closest restroom to, uh, uh, should we not complete it? What would be even the closest restroom?
Good question. So that restroom, uh, for the soccer fields, uh, which is in increment two, is located, uh, by the new parking lot in this inc- in the, in this increment that we're currently building. So, yeah, there will be, uh, a restroom just dedicated just for soccer.
Few more comments from the public. Oh, trustee Solis?
In my mind, where I'm thinking is, it's, it's not an issue of whether we should build these fields or not build these fields. The answer is, in my opinion, yes, we should. The question that I'm having trouble with dealing with is when? And what monies are we gonna use to finish these fields? The public passed a school bond measure, which it was stated very clearly what projects were gonna be used with that money. We have a project coming up, still at, uh, Garza, the Performing Arts Center, which is gonna have a big ticket price to it. With our funding, we have to make sure there's enough funds to finish that project. That has to do with direct academic performance of the school. Also out here, since we're a growing district, we have a new elementary school that we're planning to do at Shields in Raleigh. Are we gonna have enough cash funds to do that and do these fields of projects, which, by the way, was an add-on? That's the question that I have, as well as there is multiple construction sites being planned, and in the- As well as there is multiple construction sites being planned and in the process of being completed in that adjacent area. Besides just whether we're going to water the field, depending on what kind of field it is, which is my understanding, most of the time, it's not going to be requiring a lot of water to do those types of fields. We have irrigation to worry about. We have the Veterans Boulevard bypass coming in right to the north of where these fields are coming in. That's a city project that is under their jurisdiction. Until that goes in, that whole area is going to have drainage problems. In fact, from what I see of these plans, we're going to build these fields right on top of the existing holding pond that's there. There's a cost to move that, location of that water to a pond across the street and downways. And it's also my understanding, that pond was initially put there for the housing project that's going in. So if we tie into that, that holding pond, there's going to be a cost to enlarge that pond. That's going to be on the part of the district. So there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to go in there. And let's say we put it in there before the city does their, finishes their bypass for Veterans Boulevard. Am I then going to hear complaints coming in from the public that my kids can't play on the field because it's being flooded out? So with me, it has to do with the timing. And I'm totally sincere of, I have no problems with putting these fields in. The question is, when do we put them in? That's it.
Superintendent Davis is going to provide a bit of a clarification. And I know we saw some comments from the public and maybe from our board members as well.
A little bit earlier in this discussion, it was brought up, originally this was an approved item and the question had come up now, it's coming with our recommendation to deny it. I think our interest is to continue to have as many resources for our community to use and be good stewards of the funds that we committed to on Measure D and give options to try to figure out, could we do any adjustments to this? And the way it's already locked in, it was a set plan that's ready to go to bid. And we would want to have that discussion with you in terms of, do we have an opportunity to, as was brought up, do some reengineering or do some adjustments to this plan? And consider bringing that back to you for more information. We would first have to say that this plan as it is can be rethought. And so our, our interest is, obviously the soccer fields are not part of this discussion. They are already in process, as was shared. It would be looking at what could we do to meet the interest, the need and the space that may look different than this and could fit within the budgets that we have. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear on why that information came in, in that regard.
Trustee Krefan.
Thank you, President Singh. I have a couple of questions as well, but I will instead defer proceeding that with more public comments. Edgar M. is our next comment.
Hello. First of all, thanks for having me here today. I was kind of debating to speak up or not, but listening to everything. The game of soccer has gave me tons, you know, I mean, we come from a family of seven, live in apartment one, was able to go to UC Irvine, get my master's in civil engineer because of soccer. And now, you know, I mean, I'm, it makes me happy that I'm part of Justin Garza as a girl soccer head coach there. The last three years, you know, I mean, through COVID and going around, you know, I mean, I've seen the necessary of fields. I know we said we have grass fields, but having footsoil courts will allow us to rest those fields, will allow us to be able to, maybe three months out of the year, six months of the year, to be able to use those courts and save those grass, let that field rest for a little bit. I know we talked about money, financial stuff and everything. I just had a camp, I had over 320 kids out there at the stadium, 320 kids running around, having fun, laughing, family out there. So I think if I was able to, to raise for 300 shirts, I think we're able to, as a community, be able to get together and raise funds for these courts. There's a lot of resources out there. I know, for example, just last year, I brought up a couple of investors that were willing to help with this project. It didn't go far. You know, I mean, I've been doing this for over 20 years and, and been blessed to be able to work with a lot of professional athletes and be able to come up and rub shoulders with a lot of people that are willing to help with this project if they're, if you're willing to sit down and talk to them. So I, I think there's ways of doing it. And I think this will definitely help us with our kids. You know, I mean, I think the kids should go first. I think this is able to help with the level of play and definitely bring, bring the kids going to play more competitive. And I see that a lot here, you know, driving around, just, I just came from Harvest, my U6 Elias was playing, started a rec soccer there. And you have, you have soccer, you have baseball, you have football over one, fighting over Harvest. You know, I mean, fighting over Glacier. So I think space is needed. And I think we can get together and really figure this out, you know, I mean. You know, I mean, it was, I wish you guys were there a week ago, two weeks ago and see all those kids, you know, I mean, running around, you know, I mean, 320 kids, that's a lot of kids, you know, I mean, that, that were just out there kicking the ball. We're out there just, got them out of the computer, got them out of the iPad. They're out there playing and having fun. So I'm not political, you know, I mean, I, that's why I kind of thought about coming up here. But I am, I am there for the kids. And I've done it at the Hennessy Center. I used to adopt parks back in Hennessy Center, we did it there. And all we can do here, you know, I mean, so I, I'd be more than happy to sit down with any of you guys and talk about figuring this out together. But I think we should be able to get together and make this happen.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
The last card I have is for Robin Torones.
Good evening, board members. My name is Robin Torones. As a parent of soccer players at Justin Garza and other local competitive teams, I have traveled specifically for Futsal as far north as Santa Clara and as far south as Los Angeles. Please consider the advantages. You will be giving the kids to our community who do not have the resources to travel for Futsal tournaments. Not only will these facilities benefit the soccer clubs of our community, but will benefit the overcrowded Justin Garza High School. PE classes can be held on the Futsal fields and, and other activities as well for not just the students of Central, but the students of Fresno County. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any further questions or comments, otherwise we did have a motion by trustee Cervantes.
Point of order, I did have a couple of questions, I didn't get a chance to.
Sure. Go ahead, trustee Krefan.
Thank you. So first question I have for you is, does denying this item as is affect the timeline or cost of building the five soccer fields?
No.
And does this item, if approved, does it, the, the Futsal fields, does that affect the funding or timeline for the other projects like trustee Solis mentioned of the Vapa Building at Garza or the Shields and Brawley School?
Yes.
And does a denial of the item tonight or a delay prevent installing Futsal fields at Garza in the future?
It will delay the project. So if we, if this is, item was to return, like mentioned before, we would need to do it quickly.
When you mentioned delay, do you mean months, weeks, years?
Well, I would say months. Currently I have a construction manager on, on that particular project. And right now they're gearing up for other projects with other districts. So I don't want to let too much time go by or else we'll.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. So I returned, I know trustee Cervantes had a motion. Trustee Cervantes, could you repeat your motion?
My motion was to do a deeper dive and to determine whether or not we could cut some costs or what we might be able to, to do to establish some corporate relationships. But perhaps maybe there are some folks out there that could be willing to help participate in the cost. And also to maybe take a look at the revenue that probably could be generated through tournament play and things of that nature, use of Futsal facility.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by trustee Sellers.
I'd like to have further discussion. I will not be supporting that motion. It's really frustrating to hear some of the conversation that is happening. Of course, allocating $12 million to this project is going to impact our budget as a whole. And as far as the discussion related to our bond and the bond language, we advertised our popular projects, but the bond, bond language is written in such a way that would include this project. We've heard from our community, we've had this discussion now, we know for certain if we delay this project or we just nick it completely, which is probably what's going to happen next round, it's only going to cost more. And so I'm not in favor of delaying. I'm in favor and ready to support the project. We have students. We have students currently in our district who are participating in Futsal, and this is providing another benefit. And there's an educational and enrichment to be provided. And so it's just, I'm just really disappointed with, with some of the responses that we're getting in response to some of the questions and even some of the comments from my fellow colleagues. But I've, I've said my piece, I will not be supporting the motion to table this item.
Point of query, President Singh.
Trustee Krefan.
Oh, sorry, my mic was off. Could I get a recollection of the motion? I couldn't quite hear with trustee Cervantes's computer.
Trustee Cervantes, do you wish to repeat your motion for trustee Krefan?
Absolutely, but because I am remote, people are having a hard time. My motion was to give us a little opportunity to do a deeper dive, to see if there was a way to cut some costs or to establish some professional corporate relationships to offset our costs before moving or voting on, on the subject. And also to look at the impact financially, what revenue this Futsal courts may be able to generate to help make one itself.
So we have a motion by trustee.
Months. I'm merely, I'm merely talking about delaying it long enough to do a little bit of a deeper dive to see if we might be able to access some additional resources.
Thank you. So we have a trustee by trustee Cervantes, we have a second by trustee Sellers. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Corio.
No.
Trustee Cervantes.
Yes.
Trustee Krefan.
Nay.
Trustee Maile.
Yes.
Trustee Sellers.
Yes.
Trustee Solis.
Yes.
President Singh.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-2.
Thank you for everyone that provided input. Next, we move on to action item number three, approve California Teaching Fellows Foundation contract. Dr. Boatwright.
Teaching fellows are students that are enrolled in local colleges and are employed in classrooms and after-school programs throughout the valley. We've utilized teaching fellows for several years in classrooms to provide increased opportunities for differentiated, individualized and small group instruction for our students. Teaching fellows also receive 40 hours of professional development to prepare them to work with the students. They work closely with teachers to address specific student needs in literacy and mathematics. Ten school sites are requesting teaching fellows for this school year. Administration is recommending that this item be approved this evening.
Questions or comments from the, from the board? Do we have a motion?
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion by trustee Krefan. We have a second by trustee Sellers. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Corio.
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes.
Yes.
Trustee Krefan.
Aye.
Trustee Maile.
Yes.
Trustee Sellers.
Yes.
Trustee Solis.
Yes.
President Singh.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next, we move on to approve out-of-state travel. Mr. Bart.
Good evening, board. Board President Singh, board members and superintendent Davis. Any out-of-state travel must be previously approved by the Central Unified Board. The custodial department is requesting travel to the ISSA conference in Las Vegas. The conference will provide certifications and educational workshops for the supervisors. Administration's recommendation is this item be approved after I answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the board?
No.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Corio, a second by trustee Krefan. Those, sorry, roll call, vote.
Trustee Corio.
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes.
Yes.
Trustee Krefan.
Aye.
Trustee Maile.
Yes.
Trustee Sellers.
Yes.
Trustee Solis.
Yes.
President Singh.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to our information items. The first item for this evening is receive information regarding 2022 to 2023 Anointed Actuals report. Mr. Iqbal.
Good evening, President Singh, board of trustees and superintendent Davis. Fiscal Services is working on the report, which will be provided in the next board meeting for approval. Administration is requesting to place the item on the next board meeting as an action item.
Questions or comments from the board? This item then will return as, as action. Next, receive information on resolution number 232406 to establish appropriations GAN limit. Mr. Iqbal.
Okay. The resolution and the GAN calculation will be provided in the next board meeting for approval. Administration is requesting to place the item in the next board as an action item.
Questions or comments from the board? We'll return the item then as an action item. Number three, receive information on the use of Collegian Stadium by Buchanan High School Marching Band. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. Tonight you are receiving information regarding a facility usage request for the use of Darren Collegian Stadium by Buchanan High School Marching Band. Pursuant to Board Policy 1330, the Darren Collegian Stadium facility use requests for outside entities are required to go to board for approval. The Buchanan High School Marching Band have utilized our facilities in the past. This year, Buchanan High School Marching Band would like to perform for the community on Saturday, September 30th, 2023, and are requesting to use Darren Collegian Stadium. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the September 12th, 2023 board agenda for approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Corio.
What is the impact to our field if the board approves this item?
As far as the, the fields, the, the actual turf.
Yeah.
I don't have an answer, but I'm sure that there's an impact on that particular facility because they're anticipating about 500 people.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Or chair?
Trustee Cervantes.
Thank you. In regards to the $1,600 amount, if they're gonna, if they want to rent in from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, that's a 12-hour venue. Is there more than one band playing in that period of time, or is that just Buchanan High?
So that was a window that they, they chose. I am sure that that, that window is a little bit more tighter than, than that 12-hour span. We'll get more clarification, and I'll, I'll provide that to the board.
And is there a charge for the entry fee for the public?
I am unaware of any charges to that. I didn't see anything on their reservation, but I can check on that as well for you.
Okay. And is $1,600 enough for us to maintain all of our equipment, including the wear and tear?
Correct, it is.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Korfan.
Thank you, President Singh. So the, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, 12 hours, the reservation cost is $1,600? Is that for the hourly or for a daily fee?
I believe that's hourly, but I'm going to provide some information to tighten that window. It may be only a few hours.
Do we have any other organizations or sports teams in our district that are trying to use it that day?
Currently, not to my knowledge. Through Facilitron, we've, we've checked, there isn't any, any pending reservations.
And how is the condition of the turf at Collegian Stadium currently?
That's a good question. I'll have to research that and get back to you.
I could provide some insight on that question if, if you don't mind. Thank you. So typically turf lifespan is between eight to 10 years, and we're approaching that. And when they evaluate heavy use versus medium use, I think our field historically has been heavy use, not only marching band, girls' boy soccer, our sports to high school. Now it's times two because we have Justin Garza and the Central East Grizzlies utilizing that field. So I think going back to trustee Corio's question, if I understood it correctly or if I didn't, the current condition of the track, I'm sorry, of the, of the turf now is slick and lifespan is limited. So our turnaround time on replacing turf or having the conversation of what our next steps are there to replace it should be a conversation we should be having shortly.
Thank you. Seems our green spaces in short supply. Appreciate your presentation.
Yeah.
If there are no other questions or comments on this item, it will return as consent.
Actually, can we move it to action?
Sure.
Thank you.
It will return as action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, receive information regarding resolution 232407 for the renewal of security monitoring service with Sonatrol, Mr. Bart.
Good evening again, board members and Board Superintendent Davis. School facilities are vulnerable to security requests before and after school and on the weekends. District administration has received the attached proposal, proposed agreement to renew its security monitoring system services with Sonatrol of Fresno for two years expiring on June 30th, 2025. Attached is the sole source letter and the sole source resolution number 23 slash 24-07. This will allow the district to do business with Sonatrol without having to go to bid for monitoring services. The fee for the service is $144,611 and 4 cents per year payable in monthly installments. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the September 12th board agenda for action after I answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Bart, can you tell me a little bit about like Sonatrol in terms of what is the equipment on our campuses with regards to the security services that they provide?
Yeah, so with Sonatrol, they have, they do our intrusion alarm, so that's our burglar alarm system. They also monitor our fire alarm, and they do provide, we have monitored camera systems at some of our high-risk areas. They also have managed access at transportation where we have a FOB that allows us in to the bus, where the bus is parked, where the bus drivers are able to access their vehicles. So they provide us a kind of a global security package with intrusion alarm, fire alarm monitoring, managed control, access control, and some video.
Thank you. In terms of the hard equipment, for instance, for the burglar alarm and the fire alarm, are those replaced? Or however, how, how often are they replaced per se on our, our particular sites?
Those don't need to be replaced every so often. We do need to upgrade more like the hard drive behind it. The devices, if they do, one of the benefits of Sonatrol, they do monitor it on all their equipment. So let's say a door sensor does start to fail, they'll actually notify us and we can put in a service ticket with them. We just need to upgrade. They do, throughout, you know, periods of time, they'll update their own system. So like Central East, we have the ability to update it to where we can get the security system on a tablet if we wanted to. Other than that, the system is pretty reliable, and we're able to keep it going without having to any major renewals or changing out the system in whole.
And I'm, I'm thinking about this only because the Fresno County grand jury did provide a report about asking the question, could uvalde happen in Fresno County? One of the recommendations was just around panic buttons. Is this a, is this a service that Sonatrol provides?
I'm not sure if they provide that service. We can definitely look into it to see if that's something they do provide or offer. I have heard about it within the last couple of years coming up. Haven't seen anything in the Central Valley yet, if I'm sure of. I don't think I've heard it yet, but I have heard that coming up and, but I would have to double check with Sonatrol if they offer that.
Thank you. Trustee Solis.
You were referring to staff panic buttons or panic buttons out to first responders?
So, well, I mean, I was asking specifically, tried to understand the services that they provide, without taking us too, too far away. There was a report that was recently produced by the grand jury of Fresno County, again, asking the question, could uvalde happen in Fresno County? And the question is, the answer they came up was most likely not, but they did have a number of recommendations, and one of those was panic buttons in each classroom that would, it didn't really say, to answer your question, does it alert in terms of the district office or first responders, but that was definitely one of the recommendations.
Okay. A lot of state agencies, they're, they're answering that question through their tech departments by having a button on their terminal that they push that would go to a central location. That could be in every classroom having that there, and then it's automatically transferred to the office saying, hey, there's a problem in room 203, go check it out. As well as if, I'm assuming if that's possible, you could do the exact same thing with either the sheriff's department or the police department, that the office could just push a button and it would say, something's going on at East Campus, send somebody out there to check out, check it out as well, but.
Thank you.
Whether we have those services, I do not know.
Sure. Any other questions or comments on this item? Then if there's, if there's no question, then I'll ask for it to come over under consent. Next, we move on to item number five, receive information on resolution 232408 regarding Greenfix CNG station repair, Mr. Bart.
Good evening again. So the district's compressed natural gas CNG fueling station, which is located at the transportation yard at 4200 North Grantland, has a major failure which requires a repair. The fueling station is used to fuel our CNG buses. The buses are currently being fueled off-site. District administration have received a attached, a proposed agreement from, to repair the CNG station from Greenfix. Attached is the sole source letter and the sole source resolution. This will allow the district to do business with Greenfix without having to go to bid for the repair. The repair cost will be 800, $183,222. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the September 12th board agenda for action after I answer any questions the board may have. I also do have Mark Kimberlein on the phone. He is the Bauer compressor authorized seller and also part of Greenfix for any technical questions the board may have.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Solis.
Thank you to you and your staff for bringing this item forward.
Thank you.
If there's no other question, then this item will return under consent. Thank you. Next, we move on to advanced planning. No changes at this time. Any additional information or closing comments from any of our trustee members? Then our next meeting will be held Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, at 6:00 PM for a closed session, 7:00 PM for a public session. Again, that will be here still at the Central East High School Performing Arts Center. And next, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
We have a motion by trustee Corio, we have a second by trustee Solis. Roll call vote.
Trustee Corio.
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes.
Yes.
Trustee Korfan.
Aye.
Trustee Maileen.
Yes.
Trustee Sellers.
Yes.
Trustee Solis. President Singh.
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
We adjourn at 9:06 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.